I want to let everybody know that Mike is in the room. There's feedback for him to fill out after the interview. Thank you for being with us again today. How are you?
I'm good, okay. How are you?
Good. So, could you please share with us your plan of entry if you were offered the superintendent?
Okay, um, I think my presentation is here and I will do a copy of it.
Share it.
Share my screen?
Yep.
Alright, so I'll go over here. It is shared already.
This is right there.
Yeah, that was my math deficiency. Oh, yeah, we're down, down there. I do know that.
Sorry.
No, no, no.
Oh, sorry.
Um, let me, let me begin by saying today, what an absolute joy it was to tour Redford Union this morning. I've been here all day and I, from the beginning, when I walked into the courtyard and met chickens and was able to see some of the students testing, I am so fortunate to have had the opportunity to tour the district prior to this interview because I aimed a different perspective on Redford Union and the community and the educators that support the learning here. So I'm really privileged to have had that opportunity and I thank you again. I have put together a, a short proposal in terms of the leadership that I propose. It's given the honor to lead Redford Union in educating and servicing students and their families. And so I'll, I'll share a bit of that with you. Again, I'm a math guy, so I can out-acclimate after a while to the PC. Just a brief content thing, you can put that out, I'll move beyond that. I wanted to take an opportunity to re-introduce myself. I'm looking at some of the questions that I had today in the chat and I wanted to just give a extended version of who I am and maybe some of what I spoke of in my initial interview could be reiterated. First and foremost, I want to say I'm not that old. I, I gave up on my hairline a little while ago and yielded it to the appearance of my youth and let my beard go gray, but I am only 52 years old. So I, I started, I was fortunate enough to start teaching at an early age and dedicated a lot of my time and energy to servicing students in Detroit and am prepared to move on for time because of this, you know, I'll get into why I stayed so long later, but just put that out there. If someone asked me today, well, oh, what are you? But, okay, I'm a big student. But I guess one of the things that I did not highlight to the board and I, I live now in that I am the first of what I am academically and I say that my PhD is the first to be awarded by Michigan University in the state of Michigan and that is because of the interdisciplinary aspect of it, you know, college usually has a major and a, a major and a minor, but I actually had four majors for which I was comprehensively examined and therefore, you know, I have a, I bring a lot of knowledge and a good field of practice to that knowledge that I bring to Redford Union. So now I live that, my education, I think I was talking to the principal of the high school today, but I am a proud starter. And so I, I did my undergrad there as well as my PhD, which is Udi Mercy for my certification. But both of my education, my hobbies and my skill sets, I don't think I highlighted sufficiently enough in my initial interview that while I am, have been, spent a considerable amount of time in the classroom, that I did have some, I do have some central office experience. A lot of the positions that I offered myself up for leadership for within the district, because of the ebb and flows and the continuous change in the leadership, you know, position was created under one emergency manager and eliminated under the next. So unfortunately, I was always able to build in what I call the golden parachute. So as the emergency managers changed, I was able to parachute back to the job that I had before, which was leadership with Robinson, Malcolm, and Jackson. So, you know, I submit these, this skill set and this timeframe for the knowledge base that I bring to the Redford Union School District and my abilities and my different facets of my leadership. Number one, I want to lift to the board that, as I said before, I was never the guy that signed the contract or was at the table, but I did play integral roles in providing the information for those that did, for the points of negotiation, for the information and the, what the district were able to deliver on in my time as the interim director of PD. And, you know, some of that was, some of what I brought to that table was very useful, but again, a lot of it was sort of hindered by the continual leadership changes within the district. So I leave that to you. Um, I have gotten into the timeline here and then I will expand on. I'm operating within the parameters of the original, the original job perspectives that had superintendent beginning on July 1. Given some of what I have learned today and some of the research that I've done since the initial interview, I, I know that some of the, what I bring up here, what I note here is an immediate work. We are already at a, and the summer is before us and before we know it, we will be staring at September and starting another school year with all that may be brought to our table in terms of the challenges in which we will face another school year. So in, in the perspectives, and I'm squeezing everything within July and August, but I'm sure that, that's up for discussion as we go forward, given the acceptance of my, of this proposal. I initially, I forgot to put it back. I initially proposed to this board that we would enter first and foremost into a COVID safety conversation. It's become most essential, given the challenges of educating children, that all COVID safety guidelines in alignment with county and state guidelines be adhered to. And so being sure that what we propose in educating children is of the utmost safety for our students and our teachers is very important. I've had an opportunity in the curriculum and achievement. I perused the school improvement plan, I looked at the test scores and my initial review and analysis of district's achievement data would be for an alignment. I see some of what the curriculum, some of the curriculums that have been used, looking at, you know, what, what has happened. I look forward to an opportunity to speak with the educators, the teachers of the district, what worked, what didn't work. I think earlier you heard my donut analogy. I use that quite a bit in my, in speaking with the educators and I use that just to frame that for too long, in my opinion, educators have not been included in the full depth and breadth of what education is all about. One of the things that I pride myself on is I have a policy that says I'm an expert in education. And so to that end, when we talk about educating, we are a bunch of donut shoppers, making donuts and all the have bakers and donut makers in the process, i.e. educators. And so I'm looking forward to that data analysis, looking at the curriculum and seeing how we follow our way forward with the ultimate goal and all that I do and the leadership that I provide would be to be sure at the center in all considerations, given the children. We must have children in a better situation, better educated for the time that they have spent in Redford Union. And to that end, this strong culture, this commitment, I have a new term in that by the time I finished the tour today, I had met many licenses, is what we were saying to each other, because I've met so many people, I've been here 15, I've been here 25 years. I graduated, went away, came back. And so that's a strong culture to be respected, but I see it as one most beneficial to students because I take pride in knowing that if you're in education today, you're here because you like children. Sure isn't because you're making a whole pile of money or that it's something that personally always popped from in terms of finances, but it's a certain dedication and commitment to educating children. I respect that and would be a part of all my considerations. And of course, next we have to look at our students and see where they are. One of the mistakes that I believe has been made in education is that we have not changed. We've been static in a very dynamic conversation. And so being sure to capture the voices of our students and their parents. I was at the K-5 building today, or K-2 building today, and I've always said that's where I hang out because that's where you really get what's going on and the assessment, that the kindergarten is all the boss and the K-12 commitment. And so to that end, I want to get a comprehensive needs assessment on what's needed at the K-2 level and at the high school level. And I briefly highlight that to say that, you know, it's been following in standardized testing conversations to be surprised at what the scores say to us in our baseline data when we did not give adequate education and did not give adequate attention to what happens in the kindergarten through second grade. By 10th to third grade, I guess you have the process where they learn to read and then after third grade, they read to learn. But if we want to be sure that their reading to learn is transitioned and the four, five, six, seven year teachers have a adequate foundation on which to build upon, we've got to give that attention to the K-2, the early childhood scenario. And then I skip right over to the high school. I was sharing with the teachers today, when I was an educator, I taught calculus. When I first got out and got my degree, I taught calculus in high school and I swore to God that I would never go back to high school again. So I, I, I give all my prayers and support to high school people, but I, I just been saying that we must reimagine education from what was a static conversation on going, getting, getting good grades and going to college, recognizing that all children are not going to college. My son, my own son presented me with that dilemma. My daughters went to college, got, you know, did good at school, went to college, got a degree to get a job. But my son, the youngest, came out, he said, well, Dad, I hear you talk about your student loans, I hear you say, you know, you have a degree, but I know some people that get a degree that can't find a job. I, I highlight that to say we must expand our imagination around both tech trades, field trades. I noticed there are a number of industries that surround and are a part of the Redford District. And so I would be very open and engaging them in ways that we can open up new avenues of success, education and learning to the 912 populations of Redford Union. And I don't mean to oversimplify, but I have 12 minutes, so I'm going to move on. The next, the next essential part, thanks to students, of course, going back to the donut shop, my donut makers and bakers, those are my teachers. And so inasmuch as we talk about teachers, I'm interested in conducting a series of information. My job as superintendent would be to inform this board of what is needed and I cannot do that without a comprehensive conversation with the people that are in the classroom making it happen. So the series of information meetings, the union leadership, of my Zoom meetings today, the volley of relevant questions and conversations to be undertaken, if given the opportunity to lead this district, is one that is already well underway. And again, I say I bring to this district what I think is my greatest strength and that is my ability never to have forgotten, staying connected to what it means to be a teacher. Again, a very dynamic conversation that if we are not careful and don't keep up, it gets ahead of us and then we don't become as well-versed and efficient in what it is to do. Again, the conversations with the teachers in court, union and leadership would gather the information. You know, there are issues, I would be remiss if I did not mention that. I know there are issues of teacher retention and staff and, and pay, but one thing that I hold solid in my communication with teachers and I think to the board, that there are no easy solutions. To get here overnight, the problem won't be resolved overnight. But what I am committed to is being informed, educated, well-versed in a media area and a conversation that we must get right. We can't afford for the conversation not to be one that's appreciated on both sides of the, of the, of the table. And so I offer that as a way, leading forward, trying to align with goals and objectives of the district with that of the needs and assessments of our, of our teachers. So these are just a few of the areas that I, that I noted and I could have completely changed the power pump tonight, but I tried to stay with the end, 12 minutes, so let me go on. And then lastly, for the board, you know, I heard in our conversation and I got some insight from the support staff today about some of the uses of technology and I heard the board and their concerns about the communication, being visible, being able to access information when needed. So I look forward to conducting meetings, growing closer and aligning what the board needs with what my objectives will be, with the ultimate goal of developing a strategic plan. I think that is beneficial to both district and board and that we promote, we put out in front what we are doing in our pursuit of providing education for the students of Redford Union. I think it was in one of the earlier meetings when we were talking about retention, not just of teachers, but of students as well, that one of the ways that I found to be successful is celebrating what it is we do, showing off the bell and the whistle. If what we have done in a school year, if we're not able to point to the successes, we're not able to point, we're not able to point to what children achieve, then we have wasted their time. We fail in the expectations that parents have because they all bring children here to be better for the time that they have spent. So inasmuch as we get a strategic plan together, we should highlight the achievements of Redford Union and then on those areas where we aren't, where there is an achievement, there must be hard conversations and bold objective set because we all must focus on not just meeting the standards of the state, but meeting the needs of children and what they are to become a part of and that's well-versed, productive members of our, of our society. And so again, I say, I do not mean to oversimplify any of these areas. I know that I could have expanded and talked another 30, 40 minutes on, on some of them, but I put this forward as the initial objective that I want to take in, if I'm so honored to become the Redford Union superintendent and then moving forward with all the liberty in preparing to begin another school year and the challenges, as I said earlier, that education faces. So I believe this with that, that I will, I'm not watching that graphic, that I will stop there and open up to any questions the board may have. And again, I hope this presentation has been somewhat comprehensive than my initial objective. So thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward, all board members will be asking questions. This is spread challenge.
Thank you. See if we can get it up.
All right. Thank you. Moving forward, all board members will be asking questions. Mike, first, describe your past relations with administrators, teachers, support staff and their unions.
Um, again, you all know where I'm from and you mean the conversation has been one of the utmost that I have to pay attention to the current status of education, where we are is no different. To that end, my relationship has always been built upon trust and transparency. I do not speak on issues I'm not well-versed on and one of, I think, my strengths is to establish my relationships with the understanding that we're going to agree to be disagreeable. We're not going to agree about some of the things that are needed because of the different perspectives which we come, that we come into conversations on, but my relationship with my administrators and my teachers has always been, I think, exceptional in terms of their willingness to share with me, me being open enough. I tell my teachers and the administrators that work with me that I wish I was master of the universe and stars and had control over all arguments and could snap and bring things into existence, but that's not reality. There are limitations and I added that to my conversation today with the teachers in the unions in that I would be superintendent at the head of this board and that I must bring issues and there be a process of articulation and collaboration that would have to be undergone to address some of the more complex issues. So to that end, that's been the way that I proceeded in all of my negotiations, even when I was in situations that I did not necessarily agree with. A lot of what I am involved in as an administrator, not about my agreement, but my understanding. I may not agree with everything, but it is my objective to understand because only when I understand, I'm able to give the different perspectives and viewpoints and call the proper level of respect. And I believe that respect begins with an open, and openness and a transparency and I think, I'll say again, one of the major facets of my leadership, that I am fouled. I, I made, you know, I think we all, we're human, we all make mistakes, but I think when leadership fails sometimes is in making excuses, you know, throwing quotes under the bus, pointing fingers and not bringing solutions. One of the relationship facets that I've undertaken is don't bring me a problem without a solution. I will try not to bring problems without solutions for that which I can control and sometimes I must be a mere representative of an issue or a policy, but as superintendent, my role will change because as a board, we work together, set policies and we implement at district level in accordance with the responsibilities of superintendent.
Thank you. Our next question will be outside of vice president. It's outside of.
This is a two-part question. What is your experience with competitive bidding and whether contracts may have been in your career or previous positions?
Um, as an administrator in the district, we have operated within the financial system of PDSAL. But every year, I believe when I began as an administrator, my school's budget was $1.7 million and in that process, and I highlight that only because of the consistency in the bidding process and it is incumbent upon the funds for which money is being, from which money is being spent, you know, where the competitive bids and sometime RFPs for purchases over $5,000, you know, the CFO in most situations in cases set that limitation. But operating within that financial structure is remains what I've been doing primarily as administrator, even from the time when I served as the interim director of professional development. And at that, at a time when the district's budget was $3.6 billion and 1% of that was used for professional development and there had to be a strict bidding policy and acceptance of proposals put in place and then a comprehensive examination of whether the services from the vendors were in accordance with what the district needed. Every vendor is not necessarily of the level and quality to meet the needs of the district that they're proposing. So all that incumbent upon the bidding process and again, I've worked within regulated systems of control that keep us in balance and or is assured, you know, delivery receipt. I was looking at some of the facets of the district with deliveries and orders today. So I'm very familiar with it and have governed it and have been a part of, that's been a part of what I've done for the last 12 years in administering in different capacities. Was that all of it? Oh, okay.
Secretary Robinson. What does the term accountability mean to you?
Accountability is, I think it encompasses all of the facets of being visible, being present, being aware and being responsible. One of the mantras of my leadership is that I realize that I'm responsible and I'll just stay within the context of my leadership currently. I tell my teachers, my custodians, any body interacting in my building, I'm accountable whether I'm there or not, whether it, whether it happens or not. And I take it to the extent of if I'm going to be accountable, I need to be aware. If I'm aware, I need to have detailed information on who's doing what and when and try and say it's current with that level of information as possible. So for me, accountability is just being completely and totally present and willing to take responsibility. I think accountability without responsibility is neglect. If you're responsible or if you're going to be held accountable, you know, again, you have to roll with the punches, stand in very uncomfortable places, have hard conversations. But accountability is a facet of leadership that not many are comfortable with and I think when we don't properly adhere to the tenants of accountability, I think that is a sign of failure in, in leadership. But again, I guess, I think I'll stop there, but accountable, present and responsible. I think those two go hand in hand.
Thank you. Rusty Collier.
Hi.
Tell us about any bond or new construction projects you've ever heard of.
Um, I have advocated and been a part of multiple bond initiatives, primarily well in, as a matter of fact, I'm somewhat involved in one now, the development of one now, but in particular, I believe it was Proposal S, I believe it was, in Detroit. It was, and I'll say hindsight unfortunately, under one of our emergency managers where there was a bond that was needed to address some financial gaps in the retirement system and the pay structure. And so it was one that was necessary and I advocated to my community and my parents for the passage of the, the bonds. I look back, one of the regrets that I have is that emergency management was not held accountable for a lot of what was originally proposed and to that end, you know, I was duty bound to go back and tell those that I promoted the bond to, to admit that it wasn't all that I thought it would want to be, but that I reacted and gave information, disseminated information that had been provided for me at that particular time, but I was involved in that. And currently, there is an initiative that I'm involved in, I won't say hopefully, won't see it through, but I'm not there, I'm sure it will go on, where, you know, my current building is about to, it needs to be demolished and rebuilt. Too much asbestos, it has to be completely torn down. There is an initiative currently underway in Detroit to return the ability to place bonds on the, on the ballot by our new school district. A lot of people think Detroit Public Schools went away. It did go away, they're still there, collecting all the tax money and from the bond, but DPSCD currently does not have the ability to initiate bonds. And so I'm a part of the, one of the committees at the state level, working with a subcommittee within the district to address that issue and prepare a bond for the infrastructure upgrades that Detroit Public Schools is a part of. So advocating the bonds, knowing the equation of the different meals, I applaud this board for being able to have constructed such a bond that we told today, zero increase in taxes for the community. Not all communities are in that position to do so. So I'm well-versed in, I'll end by saying a lot of my doctoral studies are through on the development of public school systems throughout the state of Michigan, the conversation of bonds and the effect and/or how they meet sometimes, track some of the needs of communities. I'm very well aware of that as well. So I can't imagine if any issue with bonds and Proposal A, which is a central part of understanding bond... is a loose to me. I'm very well versed in that and been a part and currently am a part of developing one.
Thank you. Trusty Daly.
About how much time weekly do you spend doing your other commitments, such as professor at college, a consultant, the school community programs you have, and also your food program?
Well, thanks to my wife. But I, fortunately, in my adjunct positions, it's, I reduced my commitment to Wayne State to spring summer, working with the teacher, training and preparation program, and teach Detroit at Wayne State. Lastly, I got a break because of COVID. They skipped over spring summer. They have asked me to reengage that course, which is a course that prepares teachers for the rigor and responsibilities of entering into a classroom, sort of the gap between practice and theory. So that is Wayne State. I just concluded a project with Eastern Michigan where I work in the educational leadership. We concluded our current work with a recent presentation to the American Educational Research Association about maybe two weeks ago. And so all of our papers have been collected and I think eventually there'll be a publication that will highlight our work in that particular area. But I limited, and I don't make any long-term commitments because I always needed the flexibility to give the time to what my primary love is, and that is my school, which is why I bring up the wife because I'm mayor. Sometimes late at night, she asks me who I am sometimes because she sees me in passing. But I say that to say, I spend a lot of time in making sure that what I do is presentable and most of all meets the needs of my students by making sure my teachers, my teachers are supported. And community goes a long way in that because, I want to go back, I guess I'm going to center tonight around accountability. If what I do does not meet the needs of those that I'm serving on all levels, then I've not been successful, not done my job. And that sometimes takes more time than not because if we don't pay attention to how we present what we do, then we violate the perception that is reality. People are going to respond to what you do, what happens in accordance with what they perceive to be useful and non-useful. So I manage it pretty well. I work on average about 12, 13 hours a day. And I know my wife is in your line, but no, about 12, 13 hours a day in getting what I need to be done and making sure that all, I like to call it, all my bases are covered. I hope that answers your question. But my work outside is very limited and at my discretion.
Thank you.
Trusty Gray.
How do you go about developing family relationships with all of them who's this board?
I think one of the first things, and I was fortunate enough, and I'd always heard about it, I'd be completely transparent, I took, I was fortunate enough to take a superintendent's cohort course with the Michigan Association of School Board last year. And I highlight that because while I have always known that this is what to do, I had the opportunity to hearing how useful it was from both superintendents and from board members on the superintendent developing individual relationships with each and every board member. Of course, you know, you recognize the hierarchy, the president, the vice president, but you operate as a body. You will inform and in some cases recognize actions as a body. But it would be incumbent and, you know, my accountability to be sure that you are aware of who I am as an educator. I say upfront to this board, I'm a content educator concerned about children. I, I, I was brought up with a, I guess, within a philosophy that, you know, we must be as dedicated to our students as we are, as lawyers are to their clients, as doctors are to their patients. That's a tenuous conversation sometimes. These are things that I would want to communicate individually to this board and I guess individually, independently communicate, allow them to ask questions, some of whom may never be interested, and some of the facets of me that others are interested in. But as long as I communicate effectively what my overall objective is, and that is to lead the students of Record Union, to support the teachers, for them all to be better progressively for each cycle of education that we go through together. So meeting with each of the boards, again, establishing viable, dependable form of communication, even after that independent conversation. Boardman McGray, you'd be able to call me up and know I'm going to answer, if by chance I don't know, you're going to get a call back from me in five, ten minutes of when I get, when I get the information. And those around me as I develop, I was thinking, I don't know if it was Jackie or whoever was talking to together, I can be attached. I, you know, I'm driven by getting things done. And one of that aspects of my being driven is, you know, let me know when the board member is seeking information, give me the information I need to effectively communicate with the board members. And so I think I can only independently come to you with my commitments and who I am and build a level of respect. And I think that again would go a long way in that being able to navigate the different conversations that we would have together.
Trusty Frymore.
Hello. What has motivated you to seek a higher level of career at this point in your career?
Again, I was, I consider it, I consider myself fortunate to be brought up on what I consider old-school philosophy of education. And that is the dedication and commitment to seeing what we do with children through it. As I said before, I've offered myself for leadership positions within the district. But to be honest, at the onset of emergency management, when people were leaving the district in mass, the mass numbers, I had been given the leadership of a school and a process of education was here to my heart. And I did not abandon it at a time when I thought it was most in jeopardy. And to that end, at the beginning of the onset of emergency management in Detroit, the first emergency manager, Robert Bob, proposed both Paul Robeson and Malcolm Neck, which I had given at that point 18, 17, 18 years in my life. And just because of the importance in my belief and that particular brand of education that Detroit was providing, I raised a little sand about its need to be maintained. And I'll never forget, we had properly given Mr. Bob the history of the district and the history of African-centered education in Detroit, which he did not know. When the conversation settled, he said, well, since you raised the majority of the hell about it, you be the principal. And that was how I became the principal of the combined academies because both Robeson and Malcolm Neck were separate institutions at once. But when he decided to maintain the program, again, he gave the leadership of it. So I thought I could have been a superintendent or could have pursued leadership outside of the district a lot sooner. I fulfilled my commitment, I think, to a project that I was there when it started. The founder handed it off to me with the goal of take care of it, the founding principle of Malcolm Neck Academy was Dr. Watson. Many people don't know that I was, I hadn't enrolled in law school. I was going to law school at Wayne State. I was going to be a big laughing lawyer and he'd make lots of money. But I, Dr. Watson was the one that found out that I was good with teaching math, the kids responded well to me. And just as my father and I had come to longer heads of what I was going to do on his dime, Dr. Watson said, give up the class, give up the courtroom and come to classroom. And I have been there ever since. And so I highlight that with the board, just to give you some insight into my commitment to what I was doing. But I've reached a point in my career now where all that I've done and all that I've given to the school, the test will be what happens when I'm not there. Because it's going to happen one way or the other. You know, my grandma used to say, if you don't think things can change without you, I dare you to die. And you will see how things will go on without you. So I'm ready to move on, offer myself leadership in a different venue and expand my impact on the children of Record Union and just broaden conversations. At a time that I feel most vital that needs to be done, because this pandemic has put us educated in particular in dire straits to come up with solutions that best serve children. So I guess, I hope I answered why I've been there and I'm not doing until now. And I'm just overwhelmed with the opportunity to serve the Record Union.
Would you like a drink of water?
No.
With the last of a curriculum director, how will you guide curriculum in the district? How will you ensure that it's equitable and culturally conscious?
Well, fortunately, I've had extensive experience in that. Again, you know, I don't mean to simplify African-centered education, but basically what it is, is the identification and inclusion of education within a curriculum that allows the students to come apart or at the center of all that is learned. I believe you take African off and you put anything else in that spot, all education needs to be inclusive of who children are and where they come from and acknowledge their lived experiences. So in terms of maintaining curriculum, I have that experience. I would, I think I'm well versed to start that conversation and begin to work with teachers and administrators. And I hope to be able to at some point add people to help me with that. Again, I'm not all-knowing. I know what I know and I'm good at what I've done. But I know the information that would be needed to be comprehensive because while I know of general curriculum and all these courses are required, I acknowledge the recent shift in special ed or exceptional student services. If the board is aware that the federal government has flipped the whole entire script on how we provide services and parameters surrounding that. That takes insight. So again, I want to do all things well, but I realize that I'm not always in a position to do all things. But that which I don't know how to do, I look to surround myself with people who are able to bring that knowledge to the table and hopefully maybe engage this board on ways that we restructure what we're doing to bring accountability. I go back to my donut shop. I need donut makers and bakers, as many as possible, to be sure we are able to deliver what our students and their families are expecting from their time at Record Union. So something I've had, I've got a lot of experience in, done a lot of research in, and more than ready to step up to the task of delivering that to the students of Record Union.
Thank you. Vice President Osasuna.
Amidst an endless teacher shortage amid an ongoing pandemic, what will you do to both retain teachers and instead of incentivize teachers to come to this district?
One of the things I do in my role at Wayne State is, as I said, working with pre-service teachers and something I think has gone lacking from the profession is an adherence to the philosophy and the purpose and position we feel, we fulfill within society. I share with some of the teachers all day today, some of the educational philosophy and its importance is what I fell back on when I was monumentally disappointed at some of the things I experienced under emergency management. To that end, I believe in sharing and collaborating and aiding teachers along those lines. That goes a long way. I must be motivated as an educator, even when the society which I work does not value education in the same way that I do. I see the changes that have happened and to identify, be able to identify with teachers that I know, that I know we are the most relied upon part of our community, yet we're sometimes placed in positions where, you know, we have to sort of buttress what it is we do and why we do it when it ought to be, when we ought to be able at some point to know and appreciate it. So I think being able to connect with teachers along philosophical and ethical lines would be a start. To be honest, you know, I would want to conduct conversations with this board because there's a lot that happened before I arrived. I know that conversations in teacher retention must go beyond talking. At some point, we need to be able to offer teachers something that speaks to the value and worth and importance for which they serve within the district. I don't know what that looks like. I told them when I was speaking today, I have no pie in the sky to sell. I have no pie. I need to engage in the conversation. As a board, we would sit down and we'd look at what's possible. We didn't get here overnight. I know that there are certain aspects that have to be undertaken in terms of considering how we do that. I believe I was told there were a number of contracts that are coming up for negotiation within the district. I'm sort of the man in the middle right now. But what I can say to you that I did to teachers, I'm dedicated to the conversation. And at the end of whatever we discuss, whatever we do, it must be how it affects the children, how are they the better for it. And I believe when we set our goals and priorities, either in a strategic plan or in, from within where the district is right now, the commitment to children and the teachers must be paramount. Without them, this doesn't work. And so I want to dedicate time and energy to getting that done and just connecting with them. But I'm confident that there are plateaus that we will arrive on that will allow for the teachers to see, you know, that we are committed as a board to supporting their work and acknowledging that they too live lives, have fields, have families, that we must help them in their support. Want you to tell me that this is serious work, but it's not missionary work. And I get that. I get that. And I'm willing to engage that conversation for the betterment of both sides involved.
Thank you. Secretary Robinson.
The arts are very important and are often put on the back burner in school districts for various reasons. This leaves non-athletic students on the bench. How will you go about helping improve, grow, create arts programs in our district?
Well, I immediately am drawn to a concept that we sometime overlook and I think will be simplified. That's the whole child concept. And if you look at the whole child concept, we also realize that it's multi-dimensional. It does go beyond being able to play an instrument or being on an athletic team. One of the mistakes that educators have made is we focus on this squeaky wheel. If the children aren't academically advancing the way they should in all the programs, then that's a necessity. But we also need to look at the kids that are there outstandingly, the non-athletic, the gifted and talented. What are we doing? There's been a volley of STEM programs. There's been a volley of STEM and C programs that in many cases have been made free to school districts in the last few years of this pre-pandemic. I give those as an opportunity to engage all students in whatever their area of interest or whatever their modalities are. And I think as educators, sometimes we have gotten away from identifying the modalities. What are the ways children learn? How are we able to connect with children in such a way that we engage and inspire them? I see that as one of the challenges when we come back to a school here where they've been used to, have grown used to being at home. We're going to have to engage them in coming back and seeing the utility in being back in school. And so I just put all that in the parameter of what we will need to do to meet the needs of all children. You know, finding that a lot of the children that are non-athletic have modalities of learning in technology, coding and games. And one of my colleagues reminded me not to give way to the couch potato syndrome, you know, where you're engaged in technology, but it's not athletic. It's a well-balanced equation that has to be undertaken. I was excited to see the band director, the band room today, and the art room and the vocal music. And I say that because, again, I'm coming from a place where at one time, those aspects were considered non-essential and they were eliminated. Again, to why I stayed, I was there and able to endure my leadership. I requested some of the support. I went out and I got grants from Carnegie Mellon, from the Knight Foundation, to support art programs at a time when the district was not supporting art programs. I believe there are even a few YouTube videos out there about that art program that Robeson and Malcolm Neck undertook. So I say that to say, we have to So I say that to say, we have to go and do what's needed in order to engage all students. And I'll end by saying that it's a conversation with parents in terms of helping us, providing consistency in terms of what we're offering and then them making their children as available as possible to what might be an after-school program or Saturday school, which is something that's become extremely popular at Robus and Mountain next. My teachers weren't always that vile about it, but being able to have an opportunity for students to come out on Saturdays and do artwork or to work on special projects. You know, again, if this is the business we're in, then this is some of the things that we must do and consider. And that whole child concept goes a long way in guiding those conversations. It's more than what we consider traditional. Sometimes we have to look at what's essential.
Trey, first to go in.
Okay, this is a two-part question. How do you decide when it's appropriate to involve others such as teachers, other administrators, students, parents, or the board in decision-making? The second part of that is in hindsight, have you ever concluded that you should have had more involvement by others before a particular decision was made?
Well, one space I find myself in, and I said this in different classes, that unilateral decisions are very seldom a good decision. We need to involve all necessary individuals in the decisions that are made especially in the schools. In terms of the discretion used and the involvement of individuals in certain conversations, there are laws, there are HIPAA laws, and there are other, you know, considerations that legislation dictates in terms of what we share, when we share, and who we share it with. But at all aspects and in situations, I believe the board is aware of it all. One of the aspects of my leadership that I would provide is that I know you have an option of things called closed session, where you're able to look at and hear information that is not necessarily to be made public. There is, I think I mentioned initially, there are secure spaces where you can hear sensitive vital conversations that I may be engaging as the superintendent. Again, with the right adherence and recognition of what's being said and also the acknowledgement that there's some things we are duty-bound to report in terms of CPS and outside agents. So really, the answer to that question would be catered around the particular situation and what was domain, what people are demanding to, needing to know without violating these rights, rules, or legislation. But I believe there to be a space where you, the board, are privy to almost everything. I won't say almost, you're privy to everything, as long as I'm able to curtail it and keep it in such a context to where again, nobody is damaged, hurt, or otherwise castigated for a situation that may bind itself.
Trustee Barry.
What is your experience with developing, implementing, and overseeing a strategic plan?
I've had a lot of experience. I'll give my professional primarily has been at the board level, I'm kidding, at the building level in terms of, it's been incumbent upon leaders in DPS, especially within the last four years, that we develop strategic plans that are aligned with the overall goals and objectives of the district plan. And that we develop it in such a way that we promote it, we put it forth, and we show evidence of how we're working with the community and our students and acknowledging such. So, you know, developing and implementation of strategic plans, I've been, I'm well versed in. But at another level, I was able to serve, I served as, I think currently the longest-serving Chairman of the Board for the Detroit Parent Network. It is a nonprofit that I was able to lead the last seven, I led them for seven, eight years. And we were, we've seen various grants from the Latifah Community to do extensive work with parents and communities. I think at one point, EPN extended its reach into about four or five metro Detroit school districts. And so to that end, when our budget and our objectives expanded so broadly, we started to see the need for strategic plan to better frame what we do, why we do it, and who it is that we service. And so I oversaw the development and maintenance of two strategic, two, almost three strategic plans before I decided to resign. I'd been there long enough and I handed the leadership to another board chair. So the development is a very, it should be a process undertaking with care, one undertaken with consideration, and then commitment. Because once it's out there, you're duty-bound to follow through on it and to be sure those that it's directed for or directed at, that they see the benefit of the work that you've done in accordance with the plan that you set. So I both led one as a Chairman of the Board, and at one point, EPN's budget exceeded nine million dollars a year. So, you know, I've never governed, well, yeah, I've never governed that kind of money. But a strategic plan and then again, at board level, for which the strategic plan were aligned within the budget and objectives and the focus at the building level, also in accordance with the district. So extensive work, valuable, and I think essential, especially in the period of education in which we find ourselves. What are we doing? Why are we doing it? Who are we doing it for? Is, I guess, some of the three tenants that I would list in me here.
Thank you.
Trustee Firemore.
Given that most of our central office staff positions are vacant, how will you go about filling them and in what priority?
Ooh. Okay. I would say first and primary, and I'll be honest with the board, the adherence to academics is an essential function. Again, I know curriculum development, I know curriculum support, but also taking consideration that I will have other areas of focus that I must give my attention to, and academics is first and foremost on that agenda. And so I think if I'm not mistaken, the academic position is vacant and the CFO position is vacant. Those would be two areas I would look at first. I don't want to speak too broadly because I have every confidence that those handling those areas now are doing, are doing the job. But again, my comprehensive needs assessment would be focused on is what, we focus on what's being done and how well that is being done in the service of first students, then also the expectations that the district has in the public school system in terms of Michigan standards. You know, are we aligned? That conversation is one that has to be watched constantly. I can't tell you how many times I've signed into the MDE website and things are different from week to week, especially as we enter into this cycle where we prepare, we prepare students for, prepare teachers and students for standardized testing. So I would look at academics, I would look at finance, because I think again, we go to the transparency of my leadership because it's a bond issue. In some of my interactions and conversations today, I heard where, you know, the community had certain concerns about the utility of what the district was doing with assets and land and whatnot, and some of the considerations for working in existing within a municipality. So to that end, I would look at the academics, the finances, and then of course, as I stated earlier, the ways in which I could provide the district, if I correct, that the district would provide support for the essential areas of learning. My initial primary focus would be the K three, looking at on the opposite end of the spectrum, the vocational, how we're expanding, what we provide our height to students. And again, not to over-simplify it because every teacher's role is essential. But I believe when you start focusing on the ways in which essential roles are navigated and handled, that the conversations in between come a little bit more defined. So academics, finance, and support for what's already going on. And of course, that will all be in accordance with what the, whatever budget is performing and what the district can support. Again, I want to be sure that we're doing the best of what we can to the best of our ability in providing resources and support.
Trustee Barry. How will you raise standards and expectations in the district?
I'm sorry, you said rate?
Raise.
How are raised?
Yeah, how will you raise the standards and expectations in the district?
Another complex conversation. Again, I know I said to the teachers today, you know, there is another side to what they need and support the district can give, and that is the expectations on the other side of the conversation. Once I, once we have provided what they need, once we've given the training, there's expectation of an adherence to quality, meeting standards. I have been trained thus as an educator, as administrator, within the framework for evaluation. I've worked within a number of evaluative models. I understand that Refre Union uses Charlotte Gannon's model of teacher evaluation. I start the conversation in what is. I think there is opportunity and the flexibility that the state has given for districts to add to the conversation on evaluation and quality. Right now, currently, our district DPS was able to break off and include different aspects of evaluation and quality, standard, if you will, that did not necessarily adhere to one single model, but was one put together and informed by what fit Detroit and where we were and the curriculums that we currently are undertaking. So that would be my approach to that conversation. Again, well-informed by teachers in respect of the union. Of course, you know, I believe I was asked earlier, how would I include the conversations or how would I feel about communicating with the union on work? It has to be a part because that which we expect must be inspected. I don't like those non-tangible words, but you know, we have to come with standards that we meet and ultimately, you know, and the conversation again is complex, you know, we are more than a standardized test. But one of the challenges in meeting standards is not merely confining it to what was done and what wasn't done. But in adhering to standards in my building, I tell my teachers, if your children are successful, I want to know why, just as quickly as you're able to tell me why they're not. You know, I want to know both ends of the spectrum. And so if you don't have standards in between, you're not able to provide assessments. I believe Refre Union uses NWA as an assessment, very, very good. We use it for years. Again, training teachers in the use of that as an adherence to standard because that is the way in which ultimately we as a district would be judged on what we're doing, one way or the other. And, you know, following percentages and not meeting standards doesn't sit well with me. If I didn't meet it one year, don't meet it one year, then we're duty-bound to find our way to, even if we don't make it the next year. I tell my teachers, all my arrows must point up. Arrows can't point down. We certainly can't, we should, we certainly shouldn't be worse off than we were the year before. Progress is steady and it is consistent. And progress, once we see in what we do in adhering to standards, monitoring standards is a big part of that conversation. So we put that together in a framework that I think would be comfortable for teachers.
Vice President Osowski.
Considering your past accomplishments, what are some of the reasons for your resign?
I'll get back on the whole school. I've met some of the most influential, in my opinion, some of the influential people in education that have built it on who I am and what I've done. Again, I've presented nationally, internationally. I gave a, I was fortunate to give a seminar on cultural education at the University of Victoria at the invitation of one of my, Victoria, South Africa, I'm sorry, at the invitation of one of my former professors. I believe really what, what really framed me as an educator was my master's and my PhD work in terms of, you know, going to University of Detroit Mercy and just being completely immersed in what was then a line of senior educators at that level and then being invited to be one of the first to be a part of a unique doctoral program that allowed me to explore and mix and match and grow. And I'm proud to be one of the first that really dived into critical studies. Critical race was one of the frames in my, in my doctorate. But critical studies now in education have expanded all over the place and would go a long way in informing some of the information that I gather in various areas, not just education, but LGBTQ, the, well, this, binary, non-binary, I got to make sure I say that right. But critical studies has been formed. And so I believe it's the inclination of what I've been exposed to, the philosophies that I've undertaken, and as I said, and I think it's in my resume, I have been better at it than I ever thought that I would be. I was taken aback when I won the Milman Award in 2001. I didn't think anybody would pay any attention to what I was doing as a teacher in the classroom at that particular point. But I think now hindsight gained in 2020, as I am 52 years old, that I look back at my accomplishments and I'm proud of them, but humbled at the same time. Because for as much as I can say that I've done and that I know, I know education has shifted again, and a lot of what I have done is not necessarily applicable to what's needed right now. So still much to learn, and I'm looking for the next level of my accomplishments to hopefully be as a superintendent and show that what I've done at the building level can be expanded to a district. And Refre Union is just right for that opportunity in terms of the student body and again, the rich culture and commitment to education that I experienced during that.
Secretary Robinson.
What is your idea of the classroom of the future?
It's funny, I was at the high school today and the vice principal saw me lamenting at the library, of beautiful books in the library. I have 2,000 books that I keep on my trusty iPad for my teaching and just reference, but I still buy the physical book to have it. It's an era that's passing. So I start there because I know that we serve a generation of what some describe as digital natives. My mother bought the old encyclopedias and, you know, I have some of them in boxes, you know, recycling, waiting to have it. But they're here now. All of the encyclopedias is a web page away. So in keeping up with technology, I taught technology for the last seven, eight years that I was in class, I taught mathematics, middle school mathematics for my, the first part of my career. But I had a saying with teachers, and that was that technology doesn't replace teachers. Teachers who use technology will replace teachers who do not. And technology has become an invaluable part of what we do as educators, but I do not believe they take the place of teachers. Teachers must learn to navigate it. And so the classroom of the future is a classroom where the teacher is well-trained enough to do a balance. I forget where I was today, I still have to learn the name of the buildings. But I saw one of the teachers here in Refre Union, and she had a screen full of students on the Permittian Board, and she had a classroom of students that were sitting there. She stood in the middle, and the education and the flow of information was seamless. And I said, And I said to her, I said to the principal, I think it was in this Plinshaw Building, and I said to her, that's what we need to replicate, the ability to get teachers to that platform. The pandemic caught us off guard. I think a lot of educators got caught off guard because it went from something that had hence been optional to now something that's become essential to what we do in the classroom. And I said this, and only because I heard it during having coffee this morning, but if you watch the vice president in front of the United Nations yesterday, she told the United Nations that we need to, they need to prepare with all the ability for the next pandemic. Strike me as strange her saying that because we haven't gotten out of this one, and she explicitly said the next. For me, that was a shot across my bow that in terms of creating that classroom for the future, that it needs to be multifaceted, teaching needs to provide the resources to make the shifts that are necessary, to do what needs to be done as efficiently and effectively as possible in the delivery of instruction. So to that end, a well-balanced, well-trained teacher with the resources to reach beyond the classroom and do so effectively while still meeting standards of education that we're going to be expected of. I'm looking forward to engaging the conversation because there's much fodder at the state level about whether they're going to pay for virtual education next year, which is something we may be duty-bound to provide, but you mean you're not going to pay for it. And so I hear some of the conversation in that we need to rise to the occasion and present the standards, present what we're doing to show its effectiveness. We're not as able, I'm not speaking of Referee Union, I'm speaking of what I've done prior to, we're not as prepared for that conversation as we need to be. And again, I said to the teachers today, that, one of the things, again, administrative accountability, accountability, never do anything or ask teachers to do anything you can't do yourself. And I happen to be a technology teacher, although I'm sort of handicapped in math. But engaging teachers in that conversation to create that classroom and bringing our parents along with us in that conversation, because, again, we get this thing lined up at home again, what are we doing to support parents in supporting us? So it's going to be a balanced thing, and again, in accordance with what we as a district can afford and how we can best support. So complex conversations, when I'm well-versed in, and I pretty much engage every day in trying to get that to the education.
Thank you. So we appreciate your continued interest in our superintendent position. We enjoyed learning more about your skills and background this evening, and I would like, I'd like to give you the opportunity to ask a question of the board.
You know, really no questions. I'm still synthesizing many of the conversations that I had that day. I think we mentioned the conversation about filling positions, and I know that none of those questions can be applied to this moment because I know they are complex in, you know, what brought the district to where it was when what happened took place. And so there are none, except, you know, again, sincere appreciation for this opportunity, sincere appreciation for the engagement I was shown by the teachers and just the experience. Having been in Detroit my career, it was refreshing to know that a lot of what I come to know as a student myself, I ran track, I was in band, I had art classes, but to see it and see it's been maintained by community with sincere love and commitment to the student and community has been refreshing. I really appreciate it. So no questions. I gave my email address, excuse me, I've been talking all day, so it started running together, but I gave my email address to the teachers. And I believe in dissemination of information, and so, you know, asking questions and anything that may become an issue of pressure, I'm open, I'm open book, and I'm ready to get to work with so-called professors. I'm ready and willing to come and begin, you know, and I use, again, I'll get away from the donuts, but if I heard that commercial, you know, the baker trying to make the donuts, well, it's time to make the donuts. We need to come and start educating, and I look forward to an opportunity to talk with the board every week. So that's who I am. I'm unapologetic in terms of my drive and my zeal to service children. If someone serviced me, I shouldn't, I shouldn't be sitting here. And my biggest cheerleader, I just funeralized my dad last week. I lost my father, my mother to the pandemic, and so he's my biggest cheerleader. He was the one that I wished had been here to see that I even got this opportunity. But I like that only to say, we need to provide this kind of supportive environment, the introduction, intersection of these types of individuals, to live as many close as we can, because so many of them don't have it. So again, thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to whatever the future may be.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you so much.
And I would be more be informed of the board's decision today. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.